The light's not on.
Okay. Good evening, welcome to the January 2024 meeting of the Niskuna zoning board of appeals. Welcome everybody to the new year, new year on the board. When do we go ahead and call the roll please?
Mr. Latif?
Here.
Mr. Stein?
Here.
Ms. Pacheco?
Here.
Mr. Gentile?
Here.
Mr. Green?
Here.
Mr. Antonakowski?
Here.
Chairperson Hope?
Here. Uh, the first item on the agenda is the December 20th, 2023. Minutes from our last meeting, has everybody received a copy of those minutes?
Yes.
Um, is there any comment on those minutes? Any discussion? Would somebody like to make a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll make the motion.
Is a motion's been made, is there a second to that motion?
Seconded.
I don't, I don't think you can second it because you weren't here for the meeting. Um.
Yeah, I was finding it abstaining, but I can still second.
Maybe you could, I'm not sure, but.
Ready, we're just gonna go through that.
Okay, so we have a, we have a motion in a second without, if there's no further discussion, Mr. Kenny, we go ahead and call the roll please.
Mr. Latif?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Abstain.
Ms. Pacheco?
Yes.
Mr. Gentile?
Abstain.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Antonakowski?
Abstain.
And Chairperson Hope?
Yes, so we have four votes. Um, so we have sufficient to approve the minutes from December 20th, they're approved with four votes. Okay, the first matter, the second matter on the agenda, the appeal by Mr. Khan has been with, is being adjourned this evening, it's my understanding, so that will not be on the agenda this evening, it'll be back on the agenda in February. So that will matter, will be re-noticed for that meeting. We do have one item on the agenda, one appeal, and Mr. Kenny, we go ahead and call that matter please.
The appeal of Adam Bach for a variance from section 220-18B3B, section 220-13, schedule IB, section 220-25B1A, and section 220-18B2 of the zoning ordinance of the town of Niskuna as it applies to the property at 245 Menlo Park Drive, Niskuna, New York, located in the R1 low-density residential zoning district to maintain a 30-foot by 10-foot shed partially within the rear yard setback, to maintain an eight-foot high fence which exceeds the fence height limit allowed, and to maintain a fourth and fifth accessory structure which exceed the number of accessory structures allowed. Accessory structures, section 220-18B3B states that the required side and rear yard dimensions for major accessory structures shall be the same as applies to the principal building. Major accessory structures are defined as detached accessory buildings or other structures in excess of 120 square feet. The shed at 300 square feet is a major accessory structure. Section 220-13, schedule IB, requires a 25-foot rear yard setback. As installed, the shed is located four feet from the rear property line, therefore 21-foot rear yard setback variance is required. Section 220-25B1A states that the maximum height for fences in the rear yard shall not exceed six feet. As installed, the fence at the basketball tennis court is eight feet, therefore two-foot fence height variance is required. Accessory structures, section 220-18B2 states there shall not be more than three accessory structures on a lot. Before the shed and fence were installed, the lot had three accessory structures, an existing shed, a pool, and a fence. The new shed counts as the fourth accessory structure, and the new fencing at the basketball tennis court counts as the fifth accessory structure, therefore a variance for two additional accessory structures, five total, is required. Twelve notices were mailed, zero responses.
Thank you, is the applicant present? You'd like to come forward, state your name and address for the record, please?
First of all, before I do that, I checked online, I thought the time was 7:30, I, so I hope we didn't cause any.
No, you're fine, you're right on time.
Hillary. Yeah, my name is Hugo Bach, I reside at 830 Downing Street, and I've been a resident there for 24 years.
And I'm Laura Bach, and I reside at 245 Menlo Park Road.
Okay, so we have your application, there's three variances you're seeking this evening. And the first thing I'd like to just get out of the way, and maybe I'm inactive, this may be incorrect, but were you before the board recently on another variance application?
Not, I, I don't know, it depends on what you say by recent, I mean, we've had to get variances in the past.
Well, for this property within the past year, year and a half?
Probably over a year, like, we had the pool, we had to get a variance because of our, the way the property sits. And then we had, we have, we had one lot, and then the lot next to us was vacant for years, and so a couple of years ago, we purchased that lot, that's why we ended up closing it with a fence.
And at the time you, at the time you purchased it, you enclosed it with a fence, you needed a variance for that, correct?
Yes.
So you.
But I just don't know the ti, like, I can't say.
2021.
I'm sorry?
2021.
Okay, 2021. Time flies, so I apologize if my time was off, so, at, just for clarification, at the time that you enclosed the, 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 the second property with the fence, there was nothing constructed on that property at that time?
No.
Okay, and at that time, you knew that you needed variance, variances for various things that popped up on the property, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and then subsequent to that, you installed the, the court, the shed, the court with the fencing and the shed, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and, and did you have somebody install it for you?
Yes.
And who was it that installed it for you?
Well, depending on, because they were two, I mean, we had the shed built and brought in.
All right, and so you had contractors that did both of those things? I'm sorry?
The Amish did that.
Okay.
They built the shed.
Okay, they built the shed, but did you have a contractor install it?
They did.
Okay, and how about the, the court, who did that for you?
That was a, that was a, a company.
Do you know which company it was?
Uh, yes, because I, now, I'm, it was, why now am I blanking on it? It was the Bricklay Company, because all they did was.
No, Ross.
No. Um. Oh, I'm so sorry, I'm blanking on the name, it was a asphalt company, I could maybe Google.
Okay, that's okay, but then you had a separate company install the fencing as well?
Well, yeah, because it's a fencing company, like, so we had Sienna, because we had a fence around our pool, and before we had the, the lot next to us, so we had to have a fence, and then when we bought the lot next to us, we expanded the fence, so that company just came in.
I'm just talking about the, with respect to the, the variances that you're seeing tonight, and the fencing, the, the additional fencing that's been put in since you were back, since you were here in 2021, was it Sienna that put in that fencing for you?
Yes.
Okay, and at the time that they put that fencing in, did they indicate to you that you would need any variances for that?
No.
Okay, did you request, you knew that you would need building permits for, for construction on the property though, correct?
I, yeah, I, I, you know, I have to be honest, I kind of have to defer that to my husband, I assume, yeah, I, I mean, I'm assuming.
Yeah, listen, a reasonable person would know that some point, and there's a process for sure, and it's very clear by the questions that you're offering that the process wasn't followed, that's why we're here, and that's why we're appealing.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just trying, I'm trying to ascertain, because as you're aware, one of the issues that we have to consider is whether it's a, you know, a self-created hardship, which I think you conceded to a certain extent, it was a self-created hardship in your application. What I'm trying to ascertain is, was it the contractor that failed you and didn't advise you of the, the need for these things?
My understanding was there was no information saying you had to go get these things, your question as I took it means, should we, should he as the applicant had some understanding that maybe he should have?
Forward with putting something if they said we needed, like, you know, we wouldn't, if they had come to us and said, you need a variance for this, I mean, we would have done that, we did that with the pool, we did that with the other, so if they had come to us and said, well, we can't build this because we need that, we certainly wouldn't have overlooked that or not gone.
Okay.
Did the appropriate.
All right, so I just want, I wanted to get the light, because I know, I had recalled that you had come here originally, and my, and my concern was, if you came here originally and you knew that you needed a variance, why wouldn't you have come and sought the variances before you put the, you know, the, the court and the fencing and the shed on the property?
And, and we, I think we would have in every instance, I think what, I think it was difficult for whether it was a contractor or us, when you look at the lot, first, our lot itself that was where our house was, is a really odd lot, and it was really difficult based on, you know, because it's, it's at an angle to try to put a pool in, it was just a very strange lot, and the one next to us, as you can see, it never sold because it had sold twice before, and when people came in and had a contractor to build a house on it, it's such an odd-shaped lot that both times that property sold, they, they didn't just put a house on it purely because you really couldn't put a house that would fit on it, that's kind of like, that would be aesthetically part of the neighborhood, you couldn't put an, you couldn't put any house on it. So it was a really, the way the lots were broken up, it almost was as if that lot should have had a little bit, like, everyone should have had a little bit more property, and the property next to us that we purchased shouldn't have really existed.
And just embellish that a little bit, the, the previous owner of that lot.
Point of order, if I may, Mr. Chairman, shouldn't we have people who are speaking introduce themselves?
I, I think they both identified themselves with the, and identified the record.
Was that full? Okay, just want to make sure.
Yeah, just to, to extend that point a little bit, that lot had gone to the point where, at least on one or two occasions, they actually staked it out, put the stakes in to show what a proposed house would look like, they even drew up blueprints for the house, the neighboring, the neighbors in the area saw where their stakes were, Laura as well, my daughter-in-law, and it was right on top of their property, particularly if you add a garage, so they went back to the original contractor who owned that lot, said, look it, you have not even put a spec house on there, you haven't done anything with it, what's, are you interested in selling the lot? He held out for the longest time, they didn't want to, they transferred hands a couple different times, and finally.
Twice it is sold.
The idea.
So let me, let me just stop you, I, I, and I apologize if you mistook my questioning to indicate a, an opinion on my part as to whether the property is being put to its best use or it's being properly maintained, that, that wasn't the intent of my questioning, so I don't want you to feel that I'm suggesting that you're not using the property appropriately. I, I just had concerns about the, myself, about the number of variances that you sought, but that's all, that being said, I preempted you when I started asking questions, so why don't you tell, tell, tell us what the need, why you need the variances, okay, why don't you explain to the board why you need the variances, okay?
Sure.
I mean, to a certain extent, they're self-explanatory, but why don't you provide, you know, why you need the variances and what alternatives you explored to the, you know, the, the format that you have?
Yeah, I, so, I think it's important to understand how this whole thing developed in the first place, and it really started with the purchasing of that lot, why and what for? And I documented, I think, very aptly in the package, the circumstances of what that lot had previously been through, why it was a target of interest, and why they decided that maybe in their best interest, and for the sake of the neighborhood and community, that, that maybe they should do something with it, so there's kind of a domino effect here, so they purchased a lot at a considerable expense.
And it was a really unsightly lot, because what would happen was, it was at the end of the street, and every contractor from anywhere would come and dump, and our neighbors that backed up would dump into that lot, so it was overgrown, there would be kids going into it, we'd have to, like, tell people to leave, it was a dumping, literally a dumping ground, so we felt after, it was probably 11 years that we were in the home, it was unsightly for us, our kids would go out, and it was not a place where we wanted to go, there was, I mean, it was really, it, it just, it, it just wasn't a great, and no one did anything about it, so.
No, so, so that was a self-interest in terms of purchasing it at considerable expense, also to clear that debris, and to clean up that yard was also an initial expense in terms of seed, grading, leveling, so on and so forth, now, no one would make that kind of investment without having some desire to do something with it, and they had no interest at all at putting another primary structure on it, their background as family, it's, it's very athletically bent, if you will, they have three boys, they're all involved in, in high school and collegiate sports, the two parents are as well, so the initial thought was, let's develop a recreational facility on it, and we're going to need, in connection with that, a, a structure to support what the purpose of that facility was, and, and what's the purpose? It's a hockey containment center, there are lacrosse goals, there are hockey goals, there are all kinds of large.
We have his own lawn, so we have this one.
There, so, so there's all kinds of large equipment, so I, I'm building a case in terms of why the investment, what we need to do, and how does that, why is that germane? Because it gets us to, all right, where do we put it on the lot, and here's the next critical piece that I'm trying to, to, to make clear, they had to make a decision whether to plot the two lots together or not, join 245 and join 249, or keep 249 separate, now I've said in, in my brief there that they didn't check with a lawyer in terms of the pros and cons of that, they worked within their own means to make that decision, and so they ended up joining the two lots together, that becomes an issue in seeking some of these variances in terms of how are we counting accessory structures, where are we placing them, what are the proposed setbacks, so on and so forth, it gets complicated, and it stemmed from these kinds of decisions that have a domino effect.
Well, let me, let me, let me just stop you, with respect to the accessory structures, I understand the argument, but with respect to, why don't we just take the variances individually? Okay.
The setbacks, you.
Let's just start with the setbacks in the shed, okay?
Yeah.
Why does this shed, what, what's the reason that the shed has to be in the location that it's at?
All right, when you look at that property, and it's interesting too, because when you talk about rear setbacks and side setbacks and front and so on and so forth, you tell me, where, where's the, where's the rear property line on that property? Because by, by definition, with a cul-de-sac, and that's the other thing that complicates this, this property is on a cul-de-sac, the frontage is very narrow, by definition, you're supposed to take the midpoint of where the cul-de-sac is, trace it straight back, and then opposite that, you're supposed to have a parallel line, or perpendicular line that gives you the, the rear property line, there isn't one, there isn't one, so now you have to decide which line you're going to take, in fact, the, the zone officer that did it, I kind of question how he came to his, excuse me one minute.
Well, hold on, sir, if you're going to go over there, you got to point to the, just take the microphone with you, just take the microphone with you, so we can keep a record.
So when you talk about setbacks, the first issue was, all right, where's the rear property line, and the way that these, the ways these come together, it's really not clear, and it's open to interpretation. Consequently, the rear setback, whatever line you pick is supposed to be 25 feet, is our understanding, where that patio is here, it's 26 feet, and I also want to point out that where this everybody is, that's not the property line, the property line is on a chain link fence which is 15 feet further, so in actuality, this pad is almost 50 feet from the property line. Secondly, um, there was a concern about any adverse effects, we wanted it to be subtle, we didn't want any of the structures to be pronounced, and ultimately, down the line, if the decision was ever made that this lot had to be subdivided from 245, we wanted to be sure that we didn't encroach on any buildable space, and when you look at buildable space, the regulations talk very clearly about what a potential side yard is supposed to be, a backyard, a front yard, and so on, so with that in mind, the pads seem to be appropriate, now we needed some sense of where to put the shed, I already told you, and I recognize, it's oversized, get it, there's no argument there, but where did it go, and where does it need to go, that would make sense in terms of utility form and function of the pad, it made every sense to put it there, and again, in the regulations, it talks about with a smaller structure, that a five-foot setback is appropriate on a side, uh, side yard setbacks, five yards, five yards is appropriate for a side yard setback, we put it at five, I know when he measured it, it was at four, that was an unintended consequence, which I hope I explained in my packet, they put down a ground stone pad, the Amish scheduled two occasions where they were going to set that, that structure, and by the way, when we talked to them about what we wanted the shed for, they would have built anything, they recommended that size for the kind of equipment and things that he wanted to store in warehouse, that was their recommendation, this is really what you need for everything that you want to do, your lawn equipment, your, your lawn furniture, your athletic equipment, really anything less than that is not going to be functional, and why spend good money and not be able to do what you wanted to do? It was set at five foot, when they delivered it, after two cancellations, no one was there, they dropped it off, we never, ever checked that final footing measurement, and apparently, when the gentleman, the zone officer did, he found four feet instead of five, so again, the placement of the court, the placement of the shed was not to be intrusive in any way, down the road, not to interfere with any buildable lot, should that become necessary, it's not in anyone's line of sight or view, except for the one house across the street, and that's very, very fractional, and there are no adverse effects from our point of view, so that's how we came to those setbacks, and that's how we came to the location of those structures.
Okay, just for clarification, and Elena, correct me if I'm wrong, but the, the white, the white fence behind there would be your rear setback, it's a rear setback, correct?
We also came in from what our property.
I mean, it, it appears that the, that you're looking for a rear setback variance.
I'm going to ask Laura to weigh in on this, because I'm not sure what they use for the rear yard setback.
Because it looks, Laura? So the question that's come up, and Mr. Bach has indicated that, that he doesn't believe that the, that the, that, he, he has indicated to me, maybe I misunderstood it, that we're dealing with a, a side yard setback as opposed to a rear yard setback, could you shed some light on that?
Um, so I would, I could pull up the definition of the rear setback line when we're looking at it, I think I have an aerial actually that might be even better.
Let me just ask you this, what, what's the significance if it's considered a rear yard back, rear yard or side yard in terms of where the shed is placed, it's going to be in violation either way, correct?
It will be in violation either way, rear yard on R1 zone is 25, and the side is 20.
Yeah, so, so the only way.
Hold on, hold on, let's just get clarification on this for a second, so is this a side or is it a rear?
Uh, the building inspector cited it as a rear yard lot line, you can see the way the building sets on the property, like, not looking at as two lots previously, he'll look at the two lots, he'll look at the lines that are behind the houses, the rear, so one, two is rear, side, 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 and then front.
Yeah, see, we don't, we don't agree, because where the house is, shh, shh.
Yeah, yeah, we'll switch with you, yeah, because you can't hear if you don't talk.
I mean, it just begs to differ, like, when you're telling, you know, when you're pointing out how, because it is an odd lot, it almost seems like the only place you could put that structure is in the middle, where I think that would be really obtrusive to, like, everyone, and aesthetically displeasing if you had, I mean, if you're looking at everything, what, the, the shed would.
Okay.
Ideally be in the middle of the lot, so I, I don't know how that would.
Well, the, the reason I was asking the question was to just ascertain whether there was significance as to whether it was a front yard or a side yard, I think that the point being that if it's a front yard or a side yard, you're still going to need a setback variance either way, a significant setback variance either way.
Well, there is language that says that five foot from the side yard is appropriate for a building 120 square feet, ours exceeds that.
Yeah, it's not.
I mean, I, I grant, ours exceeds that, again, it's a matter of interpretation, right, you can make an argument for anything you want, my point being is, this is the house, this is the, this is the, this is the lot, and again, we get into this constant discussion about one lot or two, okay, and again, in this whole development process, we really saw this as a separate lot, why, that's how they purchased it, the joining of the two lots together at the assemblage was really a, a contrivance to meet financial and other considerations, so on and so forth, but in terms of actual planning, in terms of their mindset, their intent was to be, and again, just being fair-minded, was that this was a separate lot, and if this is the juncture that you're looking for, the rear lot is in question in terms of where the rear line is, and that's a sideline.
Okay, sir.
I mean, just interpretation.
I, I appreciate that, to me, the only issue, the only variance that that is really relevant to is the, the number of accessory structures, because if you had two separate lots, I think your argument would be, you would be in compliance with the number of accessory structures on those lots, I get that argument, I, I was a little confused as to the setback, and I get Mrs. Bach's argument with respect to where you could put the, where else you could put the shed on the property, the last variance here we're dealing with is the fencing and the need for an eight-foot fence, so tell me why you need the additional two feet of fencing, you could put a six, if you were, if you were a six-foot fence, no, I understand the, the issue is for a convenience, I, I would guess it's for convenience.
Going into a yard.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's beyond convenience, and again, in the packet, I outlined what, and, and I, before I get too far ahead, I do have a reference here in the, in the regulations to point out here.
They wanted it higher, we're like, we don't want it to be, but we just wanted to make sure hockey pucks and lacrosse ball were in.
From a practical standpoint, in a recreational pad like that, a facility, a six-foot fence, again, what does your money go for, what is intended to do, and if you want to keep the flow of the game, and you want to provide some protection to the participants and to anyone who's observing, a fence is, is appropriate, the question is at what height, research said that typically in residential areas, when you're talking about a tennis court or a basketball court, it's eight to 10 feet, if it's a tennis court, in some areas, it might be 12, a six-foot fence would have absolutely served no purpose, and again, not only from the standpoint of.
Well, just, just, just to let you know, I've been on the board, I don't know, 10, 15 years, I, 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 I don't know that we've ever had any fence variance application above, well, I shouldn't say that, I can recall one, above six feet, so it's, it's not, I would, I would say that I, I don't.
I won't argue that it's common, I got one right up the street for me, he's got a, you know, 10-foot, 12-foot fence there.
Okay.
So it exists, because you don't, you don't, none of us know every property, not every property is in compliance, that doesn't matter, we're here now, it's us that's on, on, on the hot seat, so to speak, and I'm just simply explaining that in terms of setting the height of that fence, it was based upon some research, it was based upon a recommendation, given the activity and what you're going to use it for, don't throw bad money after good money in terms of what you're getting for your dollar, and that's why the settlement was for an eight-foot fence, that's how it came to be.
All right, I'm going to open up, I'm sure there's other members of the board that have questions, I've done all the talking here, so I'm going to open it up to other questions on the board, does anybody have any questions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have a few questions, okay, I did notice that in looking at the property, I did not go in person, but looking at the photos that were provided, and looking online at a street view, there is a light fixture next to the, the pad, the court, and I did want to ask Laura or anybody else if they know if there are any issues with having such a tall light fixture, I know we're talking about height relative to the fence, but was anything ever mentioned, and Laura, I know, left the room, is there any issue with the light fixture that's out there, and I'm asked primarily because light can be an issue for neighbors, I know we don't have any nearby, but I just wanted to ask.
The neighbors though, too.
I want to ask first if there was any legal issue with that before I.
And I, I know too, just the way, that's another reason why we're always positioned, to make sure that it wasn't, the way that the light goes off, that it wasn't hitting either one of the neighbors, as well as, as speaking with them.
Okay, so Laura, do you have any answer on the light fixture being tall or?
Um, so when the, the, the building inspectors have been called out on lighting complaints, and they did have the owner adjust the lighting, the standard in our code is unreasonable glare, and it's a little bit of a gray area, but the building inspector did feel on the first couple inspections that the lighting was too bright, it has since been adjusted, and I believe it's no longer a code violation.
Okay, thank you, and I do appreciate your patience with that question, I know it's not the variance, but it is part of the overall picture in how you were approaching this project, from what you've already said, when you purchased the adjacent lot, you had to get a variance for the fence that you were putting on that, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so I think we've also heard you say that when you were considering putting up the shed to hold all of the athletic equipment, you were not thinking that a permit was required, is that correct?
Yes.
Even though you knew previously there was a permit for a fence, you didn't think there would be one for a building?
Uh, you, and I think when it came to the fence, it was just where to, where we could, because I think the issue.
I'm sorry, you have to use the microphone.
So, and I think the only issue with the um, when we had to do the fence is, can, do you mind just that one where it was just, again, there was a little confusion of side lot and back lot, and then this was turning into our back lot. So we just needed to know how far we could go one way or the other, essentially. So I think that's where it got confusing with the fence.
Okay, but in terms of needing a permit, it sounds like you didn't think there was another one needed when you were talking about building.
No, I, I, I think that's, I think that's true.
Yeah.
I mean, he, he saw the, the lot as no primary structure. He saw the lot as adding that outbuilding in the back, uh, clearly out of view. And I don't think the thought ever occurred to him that that would be a requirement.
There would be a house, you know, if there was a house and, and they would put a shed and a pool and that it was just, that was all we were putting up.
Okay, I think most of us, hopefully all of us can agree that the lot line that's not against the ball fields, the one that is directly opposite the curve is, can reasonably be considered a rear lot line. Does that make sense to you?
Say it again, please.
Kind of running horizontal across on the top. If, yes, if she can, where she's got the cursor kind of running.
You're saying that's the rear lot?
Yes. Or the rear lot line. It, it's directly opposite the curve, which is the front.
Yeah.
Does that make sense to you?
Well, I, I see where you're coming from, just, let me finish.
Yes.
I see where you're coming from. Part of this discussion is that it is an irregular lot.
Understood.
And that's what we've claimed is the hardship all along. And the setbacks, there's a formula for determining the setback and I, it's beyond my pay grade to do the math. But obviously they draw a large circle, take the diameter, take the radius, they create a triangle, and then they do a number of calculations and determine where the setback should be. So there are variations in that setback. You're claiming that that's the rear line. We did not at the time see it that way from our vantage point, it's as simple as that.
If I might say also, when we looked at the lot, we also know when there were um, contractors that came in to put stakes in the ground for the house, like twice, the way that they had positioned the house, that was not the rear lot because they couldn't, that when it, that it was always at an angle. So it was almost as if where the two, if you will, backside or two sides met, the house, it was that corner that was almost the back. That, the way they had to position the houses. So I don't think we saw it as a direct back or side, the way that we saw how the houses would.
No, and I, I appreciate that. I'm just trying to get it into the record as to who considers what, what?
That's the problem with the lot.
Even, even if it were considered a side yard, uh, as the chairman noted, it would still need a variance for its placement. Correct? Okay, so we are agreed on that understanding. Uh, the number, or I'm sorry, the second variance is about the height of the fence. Uh, and you said it was how tall? That it was built uh, around the court?
Eight feet.
Was it built at eight or is it taller?
You, I was talking about the one around the pad?
Yes.
It's eight feet.
Okay.
It appears that it's only eight feet in the, the, along the back, the back line, both back lines in the court, correct? And then it looks like it wraps around at a lower.
At a lower, it's at six feet.
At six feet on the sides.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can you describe the, behind the shed, the neighbors' land where uh, the arbor vintages are? Is that higher or lower than your lot? Uh, is it significantly higher? Is there some kind of grade change?
I would say it's not significant because you can go online and you can look from their rear yard into ours and you can hardly, you can't see that structure except maybe just the corner of it. So in terms, in terms of their, again, I'm looking, I'm thinking adverse effects. Where it's located, who's a negatively effect and, and what are the problems with it? And I will admit, because I, I did do that search, you can see just the bare corner of, of, of the shed. Otherwise, uh, no, no problem at all.
And the, I'm sorry, I don't want to go on that question. And again, the accessory structures that are before us are the fence around the court and the shed, correct? Okay.
And the number of accessory structures.
Right, that's what I was just saying. Those, those are the two accessory structures. So the three, three variances that are seeking are the setback of the shed, the height of the fences around the court, and then that they have those two accessory structures. Thank you.
If I, if I may, I, I'd like you to answer this for me. In, in the regulations, um, and uh, I'm using what the building code officer cited. So uh, 220 dash 25, which deals with fences. There's a subsection five. It says a fence associated with a recreational facility, other than a swimming pool, shall be considered an integral part of the recreational facility and shall not be subject to height limitations of subsection B. When you go down to subsection B, sub, uh, point A, the maximum height for fences in a rear yard shall not exceed six feet. It tells you shouldn't exceed, but above it tells you, you're not subject to that limitation. So eight feet is not, again, in our interpretation, a violation.
Well, I understand that's your interpretation, the town, the town's interpretation is to the contrary. Laura, uh, do you have a response to that?
I'll pull up that section. I also. Um, you can, yeah, you can hand, I can also pull it up so everybody can look at it too. Yeah, that's fine.
I mean, off, off the top of my head, it, it seems like the definition defers to a recreational facility. And I don't know if it's classified as a recreational facility.
Well, there you go again. Again, I, I keep going over this and don't take this the wrong way, I mean very respectful. It says facility, what does that mean? What's the intent? How do you spell out? People read these things. And by the way, code is not all that specific. It goes on, there's an interpret, that's why you have a board. That's why you have appeals. Everything is subject to interpretation. You can dig your heels in and say it's absolute, but you know, if we go to the next level and a court is looking at and say, what is recreational, well, what does it say? It says shall not apply. I mean, I don't know how you, you can't, English language is English language and words matter. That's all I'm saying.
Chairman, a question please?
Yes.
Do we have any uh, precedents on this kind of fence located on the perimeter of the lot? Has the, has the town looked at this before as to what's fence versus what is part and parcel of a recreational structure?
Well, why don't we get a, an, an opinion from the, the town to find their, their definitive uh, opinion? I think is encapsulated in the um, uh, the finding that is being appealed from. So I don't, I, I think the town has already resolved this issue uh, from the town's perspective. Elena, if you want to weigh in on that as well?
Yeah, I mean, I did check the definition section. There's no definitions for recreational facility. However, if you look at 220 dash 25 subdivision B, it says a fence is associated with residential dwelling lots. Since the two lots have been combined, it's a residential dwelling lot, so I do believe that B would apply.
Okay, I don't have, I don't have the, the code in front of me. I, I defer to the town attorney's interpretation in any event with respect to that. What was the code section again?
220 dash 25.
Again, the point being, what would a homeowner naturally go through in terms of working through?
Well, hold on, sir. This, you, you've asked us to take a look at it. We're, we're doing that, so just give me a second here.
Yeah.
While you're reading that, we did look back at other properties and there were at least two tennis courts that were cited for needing taller fences. I believe one on St. David's and one on Rosen Hill Road.
Said it for having this?
Two.
Two were cited for that?
Yeah.
And did either of those uh, citations result in variance application?
Believe they both got variances for the tennis court fencing.
Yeah, I mean, it seems to me it's pretty clear uh, from my interpretation, you know, and I, and I'm in agreement with respect to the town attorney that this is a residential dwelling lot and that at no place in a residential dwelling lot is a fence to exceed six feet. So. So I mean, I, 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 I agree with the interpretation of the town attorney. I mean, I've looked at it now. I, in terms of. Uh, Elena, you know, can you weigh in on interpretation issues? This was a variance application versus an interpretation of the code? Are we even authorized to interpret the code? I guess, I know we, in the past, we have interpreted the code and that was an issue for the board to determine whether the, the building inspector interpreted the code incorrectly. Is that accurate?
Yes, the zoning board does have the authority to make that interpretation. However, that should have been requested by the applicant and notice to the residents and that wasn't done. So if the applicant wants to amend their application and come back, they certainly can, or they can move forward at requested, since the variance was requested through the application.
And again, I, my only position is, in all fairness, we don't have privy to the same information or a lawyer that you do. I read this as it was cited by the, by the zoning officer.
Sir, let me, let me, let me just, the, the question for you, it's, it's, it's a, you know, a point of order, a point of procedure, okay? And that is, since that request that you have, that you'd like the board to interpret, I can tell you, we've already looked at it, okay? So you kind of get a vibe for what the interpretation was, at least from the town attorney's perspective and my perspective. But if you wanted to have the board actually weigh in and consider whether the building inspector incorrectly interpreted any of his findings, um, then you would have to amend your application. Um, and that would have to be recited to the neighbors again, and we would reschedule this hearing, if that's what you wanted. Or alternatively, you could just move forward with the three variances that you are considering, okay? That we're, that we're currently considering here tonight. Those three variances, um, they have a different standard that we would be applying. And whether you meet that standard or don't meet that standard, uh, for each individual variance is, you know, something that each individual member of the board has to, to grapple with.
No, no, I, I mean, I understand. And just to stay clearly, when I talk about interpretation, I'm talking about words matter, what people read, what they decipher and the meaning they, they take from it leads to decision making. We've already made some decisions that, that I admit were problematic. Plugging the two lots together, how we count structures, so on and so forth. Putting up a fence around a, a recreational facility where it's recommended it's 10 to 12 feet. We opted for eight. I mean, these are all things, there was no intent.
I, I understand, I understand the argument, there was no intent. And this is the issue that I'm having with this application, all three applications from my perspective, okay? In 2021, I sat on this board. You came before the board and the fence at the front of the yard was already up, all right? You knew at that time that you had to file for a variance because you were cited for that fence that was installed without a building permit at that time. You came before the board, you made similar arguments that you're making now that you improved the lot, which nobody's, nobody's contesting or, and, and I appreciate the, the money that you've invested in the property, okay? But then, um, knowing that, you know, having installed the fence the first time and needing the variance, and I remember, you know, clearly indicating that, you know, the proper process at that time would have been to um, come before the board for a variance prior to installing that, that fence. Now you've made significant additional improvements and not come back before the board. And, and I have a real hard time believing that Sienna Fence didn't know, I mean, Sienna Fence is in a small operation, right? They install fences all over the place, including in Niskiuna, that they would have not known that you needed a, you know, a, a permit, okay?
But then why would they have put the structure up and not?
They do it all the time. The fence companies do all, they want, they don't want to get involved. There used to be a time when they did it automatically. You check, there was to be a time, they did it automatically. They stopped doing it and they don't always advise people. Your point is, his point is, that given previous, and again, we're not linking one to the other. You're just saying that given past practice, there should have been some awareness that you needed to go further. We did not, there's no question about that, we did not. There were some poor decisions made.
Because my, my concern, sir, is that I, I'm concerned about applicants coming before the board and saying, look, you, you have to evaluate this application because we've changed the, the facts on the ground. And now you're bound to, you know, the facts as they exist right now.
So I, I, and I'm just going to, aside from looking at any codes or anything, I'm, when we bought our initial lot, we had an issue with our pool because it's a really poorly planned out lot, right? So we had to check with fences, we had to get variances. We had a neighbor complain that they didn't want us to put, we were in front of this board, they didn't want us to put the pool in because it would bring the value down. Meanwhile, they had a pool. So we have had endless issues because the problem started when we bought that lot because of the way it was, the actual house lot. And anything going forward because of how the property structured is, we've had an issue. So every improvement has been an issue. We've tried to follow everything by the book, we've tried to do everything we can. We looked at this, again, my husband walked it. I wanted a bigger pad, he's like, no, we can't do that because it's this lot, we put the fence closer. You know, there would have been a house there. I, I'm at the point where like, I, I don't, I don't know what to do anymore. We've tried to put the application and we tried to do the right thing. We tried to count everything out. This is what we've got, obviously. So I, I'm, I'm at your, like, I'm, I'm asking you, like, yes, we're looking for three variances. Can you give it to us? Because we pay our taxes on time, we pay a lot of taxes, we tried to do it. And quite honestly, the only reason why any issue is with our structures is because we had, and forgive me, I'm not quite sure who the town person was. Come by, drive by our house, see the fence, come on our property and, and then get after us about these two accessories. So, you know, I don't know if that's what he's doing, is driving about and looking around for accessories.
Mrs. Box.
But I'm just at the point where like, we've tried, I don't know what else to do.
I understand your frustration, Ms. Box. Let me just say, a, a lot of my questioning has been directed, the, the board has to analyze each one of these variances using a, a specific standard, okay? It's a, you know, five part test. One of those elements is a self-created hardship, okay? So just, just listen to me.
Yep.
So there's four other factors to consider, okay? And then we have to balance those factors to reach a determination with respect to each one of those variances. I, you know, I have a significant concern myself with respect to the self-created hardship element of the variance application. But there's other, there's other considerations. That's not necess, what I'm saying is that's not necessarily dispositive of the application, even from my perspective. So um, I, you know, I would direct it at the other elements, which you did in your application as to, you know, why the, the, the variances would be appropriate. Let me, let me ask other members of the board if there's any other questions. Does any other member of the board have any questions?
I got a couple of questions. By the way, this looks good. The question I have, when the fence, it's installed already, right? It's, it's up, right? What would it take to make it into six feet? Would that be a lot of work for you? And did you, I know you mentioned you spent a lot of money doing the whole thing. So what I'm looking for, and again, remember, I compliment what it looks like. So what I'm looking for, what would it, it costs you a lot of money? What would it cost if you were to reduce it to the six feet? The variances that you have extra uh, structure, um, I will talk about that in a minute, so.
So, you know, I, I, I think it's, it's less about cost, it was about when we put the structure in. Obviously, I have one son going to the Naval Academy for lacrosse and I have another one in Minnesota that is, was recruited for hockey, that's in high school. So it was really to make sure that if you have the structure, would, I, I wanted 10 feet because we have hockey pucks and lacrosse things flying everywhere, right? So, but we thought that we would be in compliance with the eight. We didn't do eight, we did eight on the sides because we were like, guys, you got to shoot straight. And we did six on the two angles, right? And we do, and we also thought aesthetically, we wouldn't enclose it completely, so et cetera, trying to trust, again, make it look aesthetically. trying to trust, again, make it look aesthetically pleasing too for the neighborhood. So we did take that in consideration of the sides are six, but the back structures are eight, simply because there are houses and, you know, we were, so I'll be totally honest, I, we need a little bit, my, my boys are all si, over six feet, so it wouldn't, it would make no sense and I don't have any fences, honestly.
I, I understand the whole thing, I'm just saying right now because.
To be specific, we don't have a cost estimate. Clearly, if it's not granted, we're not going to blow up the structure. So whatever it costs, I mean, the reason for the activities are still, still going to be there, the investment is already made. If you tell us that we have to take the ends and bring them down to six feet, we will, not going to be happy about it. And it isn't from the cost aspect, it's from, again, the containment of the activity, the safety and security things that, that she was after. And again, at large, when we look at the community and neighborhood, it's all about safety and welfare.
That's about the fence, okay? So now we have the other structure and I understand what you said about the five feet away from the side or the back. That's if it was 10 by 12. So usually that's the case. Tell me, since this shed is bigger than 10 by 12, so it does require more setback? So there's any way that the shed could be moved somewhere that it could, I'm not talking about the entire setback because we have seen people don't want to put it like you mentioned.
In the middle of the property.
I understand that 100%, but there's any way, there's anything you can do to move that shed so at least it meets the minimum of the five feet?
I mean, in honesty, I have to literally get someone to take that down and put another pad somewhere where I, you know, again, it would be in the middle of the property and then lay that down. So do I really want to do that?
Just a point of clarification, if I heard correctly.
Just a question.
Yeah, no, I, just to my own ears, and you may have heard one thing and I heard something else, to comply with a five foot is what you're saying. It probably, I'd go back to Amish again, they dropped it off, they transported, can it be jacked up and slid a foot? I mean, it's a question worth asking, again, if we get to that point.
Okay.
There's a cost for sure, but again, we still have the utility and function.
It sounds like to me they made the mistake and put, your intention was to have it on five feet.
Yes, and it was measured correctly. We weren't, they canceled twice. The third time, they dropped it off, we just wanted to get it in. No one was home, they said drop it on the pad, not thinking.
But what I heard you say, that you did know to put on the five and they put it, and when our inspector came, saw it's four. So that's possible to put on the five feet?
It, it may be, it was something to consult.
And, and the last one is, tell me about your structures that you have. So you have a pool, you have the fence, you have the shed, you have the, the tennis court or basketball, what else you have?
And then we have a pool, like a pool shed, so we have.
Oh, you have two, two sheds.
Well, it's, so what happened, we initially, when we had our first property, we didn't have the other property, we put a pool in, we put a fence around it and then we put a shed that holds the pool equipment.
Okay.
Then years later, 10 years later, we bought the property.
Okay, you bought the property 249? That's the one you bought?
Yes.
Okay. So you own 245?
Yep.
And you bought 249? And if I heard you correctly, you combined those together, which it makes sense to me.
We shouldn't have done.
That you don't have, no, you don't have to pay the taxes on two properties. And a lot of time, people come under the board, separate them again to sell one. So, last question for me, it looks like you're going to have some activities in there. Is this just for family, friends?
It's, it's just for our kids. I have, like I said, I have a son that's going to the U.S. Naval Academy for lacrosse and I have another one that's in Minnesota that plays hockey. So when they come home, we, you know, this is what they do. They shoot pucks all day and they play lacrosse all day.
All right. I just have to say that the property is unique. So usually that's the terminology we use for a property when, I know earlier when Mr. Robertson was pointing out the sides and the front and so on, we get a lot of those cases where people don't have even a backyard. So, Mr. Chairman, I'm done with my question, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Latif. Is there anybody else with questions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have a few follow-up questions that follow up Mr. Latif's questions. Can you tell us what is the fence around the court, what kind of fence it is?
It's just a black chain link.
Chain link fence?
Yes.
Okay. So that's helpful, I think, for the board to just understand, it's not like you're cutting a wood fence, for example, if you were to try to mitigate the, the variance that you're requesting. For the shed, you said there was a pad, is there any kind of foundation for that that goes down into the ground?
No, no, no.
Of course, stone.
Yeah, just so that's to lay it on, so it doesn't wet.
And, and you said the Amish built it, is it stick frame? What's the nature of the construction?
Wood.
Stick frame.
Just, just wood, like studs and timbers or?
Yes.
And?
The wall studs are probably 24 inches instead of 18 or whatever the case would be, they're not.
Okay, and the siding is, is what type of material?
It's actually just like, it's just a.
Wood siding, right?
Yeah, that's, it's just the wood that they, and they just, we painted it like the house.
Okay, and it's wood, it's not like vinyl or something?
Oh, no, 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 it's just a, yeah.
And I, I can't quite tell from the photo, but is it a shingle roof?
Yes.
Or, okay, not metal, it's a shingle. And have there been any drainage issues on the backside of that, which is up against?
No, we had, we did that, when we cleared the lot, we had to get it all leveled, they had to take out, I mean, it was a project because we had so much debris and they had just piles of dirt and it was a mess.
Okay, and the, the middle area there, that's the big grassy open area, are there any underground structures in that area? And, and a point of clarification, if I may ask, Ms. Robertson, is the court itself considered a structure?
And might I also?
I just have to have her answer that first, please.
No, we didn't cite that as a structure. You can put ground level patios and things of that nature in your yard and they are not considered structures.
Thank you.
And if I may just, I know we keep on referring to it as a tennis court, but it's not the same size as a tennis court.
That's immaterial.
I just, I didn't know, like, so it is small, it's actually just a pickleball?
It's still a court of some kind.
Yes, yeah, yeah, but I didn't know if that was like, it's not, I know it looks like it's a big, but it's not as big as like a real tennis court.
No, I think that's the extent of my questions, thank you. And I do want to comment, it does look beautiful. I think you've done a great job with the lot.
Does there anybody else have any questions?
Good evening.
Hi.
How are you?
Good.
Richard Green. I just want to, forgive me, but I was intrigued. You were talking about two athletes in the family?
Yep.
And one is actually away now at college?
So my, why haven't all of this?
Yes, yes, just, yes, just, I'm just simplifying, yes or no, is, is one of the athletes now away at college?
No.
Yes, Tristan is. Tristan's at a prep school in Waterbury, Connecticut, he plays lacrosse for the TAF School. The older brother that she was leading to went to Union, graduated from Union, his freshman year, he was on lacrosse team. The younger one is at a St. Mary's, Shattuck St. Mary's in Minnesota, he's on a hockey team, he's a hockey goalie and as a fourth-year-old, his team is ranked number one in the country.
In the world, actually, sorry.
There's a very proud family there, I appreciate that. So I'm just, I'm just thinking, you know, between the two and my understanding that this is being used for the family and not for, you know, greater numbers of people.
No.
How, how often is this facility actually going to get used? So they're, they're home, they're home during the summer, so that's obviously the lacrosse season, until the younger one left to go to Minnesota. That we have, and part of that containment building, there's a hockey containment center in there, all the sideboards, the liner, the goals, it was used every day. Of course, our winters have been different, but as long as we can keep ice on it, they played every day. All right, thanks. So just, and then just like anything else, pools and everything else that people put in yards, kids outgrow them and circumstances change. Right now, it's still a viable facility for them. Thanks, I was just curious because we talked about it and I wanted to round out my understanding. Thank you so much.
Are there any other questions?
Just as a matter of order, it would be my recommendation that the variances be taken one at a time, starting with the number of accessory structures.
Okay. Well, why as opposed to taking them all three together?
Because technically you could have separate motions depending on the structure, so I think it makes most sense to do it that way.
Okay. Before, before we get to motions, is there anybody in the audience who wishes to be heard for or against the application? Having heard none, although we are.
I'm for it.
We'll take, I'll, I'll take notice that the applicant is for the application. Okay, having heard none, is there anybody on the board who would like to make a motion? We're at the suggestion of the town attorney, there are three separate applications and I would request to know if anybody would like to make a motion for or against the application for the accessories, the number of accessory structures on the property. So this would be a single variance for the accessory structures on the property.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to approve the variance for the accessory structures as written for the shed and the fence, noting that the lot is a unique, uniquely shaped lot. The benefit of having those two additional structures for the uses currently does not seem to be otherwise feasible to get the benefit that they're looking for. Does it make an undesirable change in the neighborhood? No, in my mind. Is it substantial? That's kind of debatable, but for a lot of that size and shape particularly, I, I think it is still substantial, but I don't think that's weighing against it. Is it going to have adverse physical or environmental effects? No, I don't believe so. Is it self-created? Yes, for the uses, but again, it's a, it's a unique lot and to prevent further issues that you, you did in taking over the lot, I find that I would want to approve this.
A motion's been made to approve the number of accessory structures on the property. Is there a second to that motion?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to second the motion and for all the reasons stated by Ms. Pacheco and also I think they all, all the structure look fine and they fit in that unique property.
A motion's been made and seconded, is there any discussion on the motion? Having heard none, Ms. Seketti, will you call the role, please?
Mr. Latif?
Yes, for reasons stated.
Mr. Stein?
Yes, for the reasons stated. Also, I don't think it is a substantial request because you did take over the additional lot and I think that should, that kind of balances that out for certain.
Ms. Pacheco?
Yes.
Mr. Gentile?
Yes, agreeing with Mr. Stein.
Mr. Green?
Yeah, yes, just have the record reflect.
Mr. Antonikowski?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Chairperson Hoke?
Yes, and I would indicate that a significant factor in my mind is, as the applicant pointed out, Mr. Stein as well, had this lot not been joined, you wouldn't be an ex, you wouldn't have excessive accessory structures. So in addition to that, we, you know, have in the past granted accessory structure variances to properties that have, you know, fully developed plan for the use of the property. So yes, as well for that variance. So with respect to the first variance for accessory structures, that's been approved by a seven to zero vote. Okay, so the next variance application would be for the rear setback of the shed and the variance is going to be, request a 21-foot setback for the shed at its current location. Is there anybody who would like to make a motion to approve or approve that variance?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion to approve it and I think the applicant has told us that the company who came and put that shed, they had a good intention to put it on the five-feet setback and the company ended up putting it at four feet. We have done sheds in the back at five feet before that we didn't want people to have their shed in the middle of their property because they needed room for the kids to be able to play in the backyard and so on. Whether the benefit can be achieved by other means, it looks like this is the best spot. There's no complaint from the neighbors or anybody where the shed is, they can't actually see it. Does it cause any undesirable change? I don't think it did. It looks very look alike like the house, they did the structure similar to the house. It is, it is a little substantial because of the size again. Again, with sheds, it's very difficult to, like I said before, to put a shed in the middle of the property. Is the request causing any adverse physical or environment effects? The applicant has looked into the drainage, have leveled the property the proper way and it looks like everything they needed to do, they have done on this property. For all these reasons, I'm going to approve the applicant variance.
A motion's been made to approve the setback variance, is there a second to that motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would second the motion.
A motion's been made and seconded, is there any discussion on that motion?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I just want to ask a question. If the property was subdivided in the future, where would the variance go? What would it be aligned with? Yes, which property?
Whatever property it falls on.
Okay, so the property line, if there were a future subdivision, the line might be in some other location and it would depend on that location, correct?
Yes, I mean, technically, the variance has been granted, so it wouldn't need to be changed or anything, but yes, it would go with the property line of the parcel as subdivided.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Having heard none, Ms. Seketti, will you take the role, please?
Mr. Latif?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
I'm going to vote no. I do think this is a substantial request and kind of going with the, the benefits of having the second lot, kind of reason why I gave you the idea that you should have more, you could have more additional structures. I think that also kind of plays against you, playing up against the property lines 21 feet outside of where it should be. So for that reason, I'm going to vote no.
Ms. Pacheco?
I'll admit this is a struggle for me with the setback being so much. But related to the way that the land is in that area, in addition to how you leveled it out, but knowing that the neighbor, neighbor's land goes up from there along that property line, I'll say, I'll vote yes.
Mr. Gentile?
I'm going to vote no.
Mr. Green?
Yes, for the reasons stated by Mr. Latif.
Mr. Antonikowski?
I'm going to vote no. I do believe that the benefit can be achieved by other means. Despite how it might look, I do believe that the shed could be placed elsewhere. I do believe it's substantial and I do believe it's self-created.
Chairperson Hoke?
With respect to the shed, this is a, admittedly a very difficult call for me. I do believe that this, that all of these variances, with the exception of the accessory structures, is self-created. And if that was the sole factor, that would be dispositive. Luckily for you, it's not the sole factor to be considered. I also believe that the variance application is substantial, which gets to a very close call for me with respect to this. However, when I balance the other factors, will I have a detrimental effect on the neighborhood? Is there any environmental effects? It could be the achieve, could the goal that you're seeking be achieved in any other reasonable manner? You know, is it possible to move the shed to a different location? Possibly, yes. You would still need a, a variance wherever you located it, most likely. So we're just talking about degree, which in my. So we're just talking about degree, which in my mind, um, weighs more heavily on it, it being a substantial factor. So, uh, if you wa- if, if you balance all of those factors, you put it in a blender, um, it tilts just so, ever so slightly in your favor. Um, so I will vote yes on the, uh, application, um, for the, uh, setback. So your variance has been, uh, narrowly approved by a vote of, uh, four to three. The final, um, variance is for the fencing around the pickleball court, not the tennis court, the pickleball court. Um, so if anybody is interested in making a motion on that variance?
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question to Laura? It, commercial properties, they allowed for 10 feet?
Um, I have the fence code in front of me, actually.
Just curious, uh, if it was a commercial property.
10 feet. Well, actually, 12 feet. 10 feet between commercial and residential and 12 feet on non-residential.
And one more question, can we limit it just to, just in case it gets subdivided, can we limit it to a chain fence instead of regular fence? It, it, it was to be approved?
So Lena can tell you, the fence has to relate directly to the, um, variance of effects.
Yes, so any conditions can be placed on it, but it has to relate directly to the variance that's being requested. And given this particular situation, obviously, obviously, it's unique that the fencing is, um, surrounding the two ends and its location is unique too. So I would just keep that in mind when setting any conditions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, getting back to the variance application, uh, we're at the point where we can make motions on the last variance sought, which is the, uh, additional two feet on both ends of the fencing at either end, respective end of the pickleball court. Um, does anybody wanna make a motion on that?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I would motion to grant this variance. I, I do believe that it is not, uh, viable to protect the area from the balls and pucks flying by any other means. Uh, it does not bring an undesirable change in the neighborhood because it's a black chain fence, you almost can't see it. It, I don't think it's very substantial because the way you have shaped the fence, it's not like you're going around the entire property or anything like that, it's a very contained area. Um, I don't think it'll have any physical, environmental effects, and while it is self-created, it's also looking out for the good of your neighbors by stopping things from flying at them. So that is why I am motioning to approve it.
Uh, a motion's been made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, is there any discussion on the motion?
Just, uh, again, back to the, the question I asked earlier. The motion has been first and seconded, but can we put a condition on it, or do we?
Well, that's not the motion that's been made, if, if you'd like to make, uh.
I'd like to amend it to make a motion to.
You would have to. You can make a motion to amend.
Make a motion to amend.
So is that the motion you would like to make? Okay, go ahead.
Like to make a motion to amend it, that, uh, the fence will be a chain fence and only in the back of the court on both sides, uh, for future, uh, reasons.
Why, I just, with, with respect to the chain fence, I understand, um, with respect to its location, I think by virtue of the application, it's limited already to that location. So I don't know that you need to make, uh, a motion to amend other than for the chain link. Okay, a motion to amend Mr. Stein's motion has been made, is there a second to the motion to amend?
I'll second.
Okay, so a motion's been made, um, to amend Mr. Stein's motion to limit the material of the fencing to a chain link fence. Uh, Ms. Seketti, will you call the role on the motion to amend?
Mr. Latif?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Ms. Pacheco?
Yes.
Mr. Gentile?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Antonikowski?
Yes.
Chairperson Hoke?
Yes, uh, on the amended, Mr. Stein's amended motion, uh, so that, uh, motion to amend is approved by a vote of seven to zero, and now we will take the role on Mr. Stein's motion as amended to approve the fencing at either end of the, um, pickleball court, um, the two-foot, uh, additional height variance. Um, Ms. Seketti, we call the role on that.
Mr. Latif?
I'm gonna vote yes for all the reasons stated.
Mr. Stein?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Ms. Pacheco?
I'm gonna vote no, and it's gonna sound funny, I guess, but I find that there is another way to achieve the means, just as temporarily you erect the hockey enclosure to put ice in there, uh, there are ways to put up other blocking devices, whether it's some kind of nylon screen that you would do, similar for golf, etc. Uh, so I think it can be achieved in another method, uh, is it?
I have a point of clarification.
No, no, we're taking, we're, we're voting right now.
We're taking a vote. While it is substantial for the height of the fence, I don't believe it will have adverse effects, but for me, the sticking point is, can you achieve it another way? So I vote no.
Mr. Gentile?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Mr. Antonikowski?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Chairperson Hoke?
I, I would also vote no on this, uh, application, uh, or this particular variance, uh, for the reasons stated. And in addition, uh, I believe that the, the variables and weighing the variables with respect to the self-created hardship would, would require a, a no vote from my perspective on this particular variance. However, um, that being said, it's not dispositive of your variance application because, um, it has been approved by a vote of five to two. Um, so all of your variances have now been approved.
Thank you very, very much, I really appreciate your time and everything, thanks.
Um, uh, no other matters before the board, uh, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
All in favor?
See everybody February 14th.